Yeah. Well, good. Well, nice seeing you. Yeah.
No, she's taking her song. But not all.
Mm.
Board meeting, the Community Facilities Districts. We will take them in alphabetic order and we'll start with Copper Mountain Ranch, Community Facilities District. We'll call the meeting to order. Let the roll call show that everyone is here except for Mr. Bob. And he is kind of in a place where he can't call in, so I'd like to ask.
I move to excuse Mr. Huddleston from our meeting tonight.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so please note Bob's excused.
So noted.
Minutes.
Yes, sir. Consider approval of the Copper Mountain Ranch CFD minutes of May 15, 2023.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, minutes are approved as presented. We'll move to the first new item, our new business, item D1. It's a public hearing and proposal for the full year 24 budget and property tax levy.
Good evening. The Copper Mountain Ranch Community Facility District is finalizing its expenditure budget for the FY '24 fiscal year in the amount of $20,650,000. This amount matches the tentative budget approved by the board on May 15. This budget encompasses all operating and maintenance expense of the district and is designated to accommodate potential debt issuance, expenditure payments, and establish establishment of program reserves. The requisite notifications have been published in the local paper and the board is now being asked to formally adopt the budget through the resolution following a public hearing. In the FY '24, the district expenditures are intended to be funded through property taxes and the potential issuance of debt pending separate approval of the, from the board. The proposed property tax levy seeks to maintain the existing rate of .30 cents per $100 of a net assessed value, resulting in a total levy of an amount of $2,583. This levy represents the operational portion of the budget. The proposed tax levy resolution, which is, will be deliberated during the June 19 meeting, will confirm the rate and instruct the Pinell County to collect the estimated tax levy accordingly with the option to adjust estimated levy if required.
Any questions?
No, she explained it perfectly.
All right, seeing no questions then. This is a public hearing, so I'll open the hearing for the public. If there is any public here who would like to speak on the Community Facilities District tax levy and resolution number 97.
Ninety-six.
All right, seeing no one, rush to the podium. I will close the public hearing and call for a vote.
We need title.
Oh, excuse me, resolution.
Resolution number 97.
It is a resolution.
Resolution of the Board of Directors of the Copper Mountain Ranch Community Facilities District Casa Grande, Arizona, adopting the budget for fiscal year 2023-24.
Ours says 96 and some say 97.
Mine says 97 and...
It's 97, I'm sorry. It should be 97.
Oh, I have the right one. You guys have the wrong one, sorry.
That's why you're the mayor.
The one online.
This was online.
Or the one that's posted, yes, says 97. The paper says 96.
I move to...
I'm sorry.
I move to approve resolution 97 as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Oh, we have, um, Member Edwards.
Yes.
Member McBride.
Yes.
Member Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Member Herman.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Lavender.
Yes.
Chairman McFarland.
Yes.
All right, we'll adjourn the Community Facilities District for Copper Mountain. And I will call to order the Mission Royale Community Facilities District Board. Let the roll call show that everyone is here except for Mr. Lavender and I, I'll need the lavender Mr... Sorry, Bob. I need an excuse for Bob, please.
I move to excuse, move to excuse Mr. Huddleston.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Mr. Huddleston is, is excused. The minutes are next.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the Mission Royale CFD minutes of May 15, 2023.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that is approved. Next item is the new item business. This is a public hearing on proposal for full year budget and property tax levy and considering approval of resolution number 73.
The Mission Royale Community Facility District is finalizing the expenditure for the budget of FY '24 fiscal year in the amount of $5,306,475. This amount matches the tentative budget approved by the board on May 15. The budget encompasses all operating and maintenance expense of the district and is designed to accommodate potential debt issuance, expenditure payment, and establish of program reserves. The requisite notification have been published in the local paper and the board is now being asked to formally adopt the budget through resolution following the public hearing. In FY '24, the district expenditures are intended to be funded through property tax and its potential issuance of debt pending separate approval from the board. The proposed property tax levy seeks to maintain an existing rate of .30 for, per $100 of its net assessed value, resulting in a total tax levy of $110,448. This levy represents the operational portion of the budget. The proposed tax levy resolution, which will be deliberated during the June 19 meeting, will confirm the rate and instruct Pinell County to collect the estimated tax levy accordingly with the option to adjust the estimated levy if required.
Any questions? Thank you. All right, seeing no questions then from the council, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone from the public who is here to speak on the Mission Royale Community Facilities District tax levy and resolution number 73? All right, seeing none, one, no one, then I'll close the public hearing and call for resolution number, please Gloria.
Resolution number 73, a resolution of the Board of Directors of the Mission Royale Community Facilities District Casa Grande, Arizona, adopting the budget for fiscal year 2023-24.
Chairman McFarland, I move approval of resolution 73.
Number 73 as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Member Edwards.
Yes.
Member McBride.
Yes.
Member Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Member Herman.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Lavender.
Yes.
Chairman McFarland.
Yes.
All right, that concludes the new business, so we'll adjourn the Mission Royale Community Facilities District and convene the Post Ranch Community Facilities District. Call the meeting to order. Let the roll call show that all members are present except for one, Bob Huddleston.
Chairman McFarland, I move to excuse Member Huddleston.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second to excuse Mr. Huddleston. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, next item is item C, our minutes.
Chairman McFarland, I move to approve the Post Ranch CFD minutes of May 15, 2023.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, minutes are approved. Move to our new business, item D. This is a public hearing on the proposed full year 24 budget and property tax levy and consider approval of resolution number 54.
The Post Ranch Community Facility District is finalizing its expenditure budget for the FY '24 fiscal year in the amount of $1,300,000. The amount matches the tentative budget approved by the board on May 15. This budget encompasses all operational and maintenance expense of the district and is designated to accommodate potential debt issuance, expenditure payment, and establish program reserves. The requisite notifications have been published in the local paper and the board is now being asked to formally adopt the budget through the resolution following a public hearing. In FY '24, the district expenditures are intended to be funded through property tax and its potential issuance of debt pending several approval of, from the board. The proposed property tax levy seeks and maintains the existing rate of .30 per 100 of the net assessed value, resulting in a total tax levy in about of $103,000. This levy represents the operational portion of the budget and the proposed tax levy resolution, which will be deliberated during the June 19 meeting, will confirm the rate and instruct Pinell County to collect the estimated tax levy accordingly with the option to adjust the estimated levy if required.
Any questions? All right, seeing no questions, then I'll open the public hearing on, of the proposed tax levy for the Post Ranch Community Facilities District. Is there anyone here who would like to speak to this item? All right, seeing no one, and I will close the public hearing and call for a resolution number, please Gloria.
Resolution number 54, a resolution of the Board of Directors of the Post Community Facilities District Casa Grande, Arizona, adopting the budget for fiscal year 2023-24.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve resolution number 54 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Member Edwards.
Yes.
Member McBride.
Yes.
Member Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Member Herman.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Lavender.
Yes.
Chairman McFarland.
Yes.
All right, then that concludes our new business. So I will adjourn the Post Ranch Community Facilities District and we will convene the Valago Community Facilities District. Uh, let the roll call show that all are present except for Mr. Bob Huddleston.
So noted.
Mr. Chairman, I move to excuse Member Huddleston from the meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to excuse Member Huddleston. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Please note Bob's excused. Um, next is our minutes, item C.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the Valago CFD minutes of May 15, 2023.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the minutes are approved. Next item is new business, item D, public hearing on proposed 24 budget and property tax levy and consider the approval of resolution number 70.
The Valago Community Facility District is finalizing its expenditure budget for the FY '24 fiscal year in the amount of $299,089,000. This amount matches the tentative budget approved by the board on May 15. This budget encompasses all operational and maintenance expense of the district and is designated to accommodate potential debt issuance, expenditure payment, and establish program reserves. The requisite notifications have been published in the local paper and the board is now being asked to formally adopt the budget through the resolution following the hearing. In the FY '24 fiscal year, the district's expenditures are intended to be funded through property tax and potential issuance temp, pending, or pending separate approval from the board. The proposed property tax levy of $1.139,56 per 100 of the net assessed value resulting in the total levy amount of $297,842. This levy represents the operational portion of the budget. The proposed tax levy resolution, which will be deliberated during the June 19 meeting, will confirm the rate and instruct Pinell County to collect the estimated tax levy accordingly with the option to adjust the estimated levy if required. Or, yeah.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on this from the members? All right, seeing none, then I will open the meeting, the public portion of this meeting. This is on a hearing for full year 24 budget, property tax levy, and approval of resolution number 70 for the Valago Community Facilities District. Is there anyone here who would like to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, then I'll close the public hearing and call for a resolution number, please Gloria.
Resolution number 70, a resolution of the Board of Directors of Valago Community Facilities District Casa Grande, Arizona, adopting the budget for fiscal year 2023-24.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve resolution number 70 as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Member Edwards.
Yes.
Member McBride.
Yes.
Member Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Member Herman.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Lavender.
Yes.
Chairman McFarland.
Yes.
All right, that concludes the new business for the Valago Community Facilities District. So I will adjourn the meeting. Meeting adjourned, will stand adjourned until seven o'clock, which time we'll start the regular council meeting. Thank you, everybody.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's city council meeting, regular city council meeting on Monday, June 5th. It is 7:00 PM. I'm going to call the meeting to order. First order of business we have tonight is our invocation and our pledge of allegiance at Ashkiddall Stan. And I want to introduce Jose Saldana from the LDS Church to lead us in our invocation tonight. The microphone should be on, Jose.
Our dear heavenly Father, we're grateful for this day. We're grateful for the blessing of health and life that you have given us. We're grateful for the opportunity that we have to attend this council meeting today. Please bless this meeting so that everything that will be discussed will be for the welfare and for the benefit of the residents of this community of Casa Grande. Bless the local, the state, and the national leaders so that they can be guided by these, so that they can also be a service to everyone in this nation. Please bless the families of this community in Casa Grande, that they may be well and that they may be happy. We pray for these things in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Please join me for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Jose. Thank you, Mr. Levender. All right, next item is roll call. Let the roll call show that everyone is present except for Mr. Bob Huddleston.
Mayor McFarlane, I move to excuse Mr. Huddleston from tonight's meeting.
Second.
Another motion and a second to excuse Bob. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? All right, please note Bob's excused. Next item is item C, our minutes.
Mayor McFarlane, I move to approve the city council regular meeting minutes of May 15, 2023.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? All right, minutes are approved. Next item is claims against the city, item D.
Mayor McFarlane, I move to accept and pay the claims dated May 10th and May 30th, 2023, as presented.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Okay, the claims are approved, meeting agenda approval. Any changes from council? Anybody? Larry?
We do have an executive session.
Right, okay, so then I will, thank you for reminding me that. I'm going to move the reports, item N. We'll put that after item L1.
Move to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Okay. The amended agenda is approved. Tonight, we do have a special presentation for new firefighters. Congratulations, guys, on your graduation from the academy. I did have the opportunity to attend the graduation. It was a nice ceremony, and you guys made Casa Grande proud, so thank you. So it's swearing in of the new firefighters, and Gloria, this is your task. Why don't you guys come up front?
I swear.
I swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the laws of the state of Arizona.
And the laws of the state of Arizona.
That I will bear to faith.
And I will bear to faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And defend against all enemies.
And defend against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully.
And faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
And fight with fire.
And fight with fire.
According to the best of my judgment.
According to the best of my judgment.
Again, congratulations, gentlemen. Well done. Appreciate your service for the city of Casa Grande. Thank you very much. Any council members want to say anything?
I will.
Go ahead, man.
I'm just excited. One of these young men grew up here in Casa Grande for a long time before moving away and has a lot of family here, so I'm glad to see him returning back to his hometown and serving our fine city, so thank you. That's Seth.
I know his parents.
Yep.
All right, actually, his dad went to UVA with my brother. Small world story.
Yeah.
And your dad, your dad's a scholar for that, too, by the way. My brother, he's a scoundrel.
He did go to UVA.
Besides it being UVA.
He did go to UVA.
I know Matt had to throw that in there. All right, thank you, gentlemen. To you and your families, too, both. Next item is item G, our consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine matters and will be enacted by one motion and one roll call vote of the council. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the council member or member of the public so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence of the agenda. Is there anything that council has you want removed? Larry, anything from staff?
Yeah, no, Mr. Mayor.
All right, anything from the public? Anything on that agenda that you would like discussed? All right, seeing none, then I will call for approval.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Edwards.
Yes.
Councilmember McFry.
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yes.
Councilmember Carter.
Yes.
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, this is the point in the meeting where we do open the meeting to public comments.
Just as a reminder, these comments are not on the agenda, so we can't make comment back to you on them. Do appreciate anybody's bringing items forward, and please try and keep your comments to three minutes and give us your name and your address for the records.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Ernie Delgado. Address 1272 East Johns Drive. I am your president of your Casa Grande firefighters, and I wanted to share an exciting event that happened this weekend. I was at a conference, statewide conference for our firefighters, and one of our own was recognized for a very prestigious award, and I wanted to take the time to bring him up here and share with you what had happened. Joe Leos, a lot of you know who he is. He has done quite a bit for our community, raising quite a bit of funds, fundraisers for a lot of events throughout the year, and you have all been invited and shown up and been part, a big part of what we've done. And this is actually a very hard award to be nominated for and actually win it. It's a statewide firefighter award for community service of the year, firefighter of the year award. This involves thousands of firefighters across the state, and Joe was actually unanimously voted to get this award, so here's Joe.
Thank you for that, but even though my name is on the award, we all know what goes into it. So it might be my name on it, but all those guys in the back are the ones that helped make that happen, and all of your support, and it just, you know, having my kids here and my son see me be able to be a firefighter, be part of this station and part of this community, it's, this smile never leaves my face because I love what I do, and I love that I'm here and I love that I'm helping this community. So thank you all so much. I appreciate everything.
Thank you, Joe.
Congratulations, Joe.
Yeah, congratulations on that. That's an amazing award, and we do appreciate it. It's, you guys do some great work. We have good crew of firefighters, good police officers, so we're very fortunate. The city of Casa Grande is super fortunate.
Still public comment.
Oh, sorry.
It was burning through you into me.
Hi, my name is Christine Forrester, and I represent Pueblo Town Homes Homeowners Association. We're a 55-plus gated community located on North Pueblo Drive here in Casa Grande. As president of the HOA, I have received concerns from residents about problems entering and exiting our complex when there are ballgames going on across the street in the parks. Cars and high-profile vehicles are parked right up to our driveway and on both sides of the street. Consequently, the street essentially becomes a one-way corridor with little or no visibility for our resident vehicles exiting our complex. Our director of operations contacted Roberto at Parks and Recreation to make him aware of this unsafe condition. On May 4th, Roberto said that the city would get together with the coaches to pass out flyers to parents of the teams to park further away, 40 feet north and south of our driveway. They also have parking on the west side of the ballfields. He also stated to allow two to three weeks for improvements. If that fails, he said, to call the police. On May 24th, a resident noticed that cars parked for the games across the street were parked not only up to our driveway, but on the apron on both sides. We took pictures and, as instructed by Parks and Recreation, called the police. An officer came out and had the cars moved. He agreed that they were not legally parked, and his main concern was that a fire truck
Thank you.
would not have been able to enter if we had had an emergency. He recommended attending a city council meeting to present this issue. He also wrote an email to Public Works outlining this hazardous situation on our behalf. I have the officer's email, and I have pictures of the cars infringing on our driveway. We do have a sign that says, "Do not block the driveway," to no avail. But, so we're hoping the city would be able to do something for us, no parking signs or painted curbs, whatever, and we're just concerned about the liability of anything that will happen as a result of, you know, low or no visibility on that street during that time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Christine. All right, the floor is still open.
I've had to amend some of this. My name is, good evening. I am Jean Henderson of 350 East 63 in Casa Grande, Arizona, 85122, and I have found my voice today. At Pert Park Library, they recommend to children this summer to find their voice on the summer reading program. I am and have been homeless for almost 26 months, and even though the assistance of Corazon Against Abuse, CG Helps, CBT, CAHRA, Horizon, Yumis, Crosswood Mission, and some of the Casa Grande Police Department and Fire Department, they've been really trying to help me. I've said this before, but it's really important. My existence continues to be a type of hell. You don't know if you have to live this way. I live in my vehicle, and I feel, I guess, blessed that I still have my old vehicle. Okay, there was going to be a shelter last night. We were told, we couldn't know where it was. I went over to Cara, and Suzanne said that, I told her I still had this group of people bothering me in town, and they might follow me, and she said it didn't matter, you'll be protected. So I drove my little, my little truck over there. Okay, I continue to give food to others to guide them to safe areas, to inform food served by church groups, and yesterday, the first night of a shelter, we couldn't get very many people. Went eating dinner at the shelter last night at St. Anthony's, which was really nice. I met the executive director of Cara and was told she had read my letter at the, in the newspaper about shelters, and she, it just gave her the impetus to come here and say something. I think I was in a safe home for about a week and a half during that time period. Okay, she also said she needed items or work outside CG Helps, with the city having done nothing yet. Okay, so she wanted me to tell you. They need some outside outlets so people can plug in. They need two outside cameras hooked up that they have. There need to be new porta-potties, one for women and one for men separately. The picnic tables located in the police department parking lot need to be moved over there, and I'm recommending that the rest of the tables and chairs be removed and enamel ones put there, because homeless people are people too, and they deserve to sit on something nice. The broken windows over there need to be, this is her too, replaced, and I'm saying by heavy plastic, not plywood. I recommend outside lights there, too, so people don't come in and break things. As per some non-homeless residents, there needs to be 11:00 PM curfew unless a person is going to and from work or with an emergency, as in many major
voted to get this award, so here's Joe.
Thank you for that, but even though my name is on the award, we all know what goes into it, so it might be my name on it, but all those guys in the back are the ones that helped make that happen and all of your support and it just, you know, having my kids here and my son see me be able to be a firefighter and be part of this station and part of this community, it's, this smile never leaves my face because I love what I do and I love that I'm here and I love that I'm helping this community, so thank you all so much. I appreciate everything.
Thank you, Joe.
Congratulations, so.
Yeah, congratulations on that. That's an amazing award, and we do appreciate it. It's, you guys do some great work. We have good crew of firefighters, good police officers, so we're very fortunate. City of Casa Grande is super fortunate.
Still public hearing.
Oh, sorry.
It was burning through you into me.
Hi, my name is Christine Forrester, and I represent Pueblo Town Homes Homeowners Association. We're a 55-plus gated community located on North Pueblo Drive here in Casa Grande. As president of the HOA, I have received concerns from residents about problems entering and exiting our complex when there are ballgames going on across the street in the parks. Cars and high-profile vehicles are parked right up to our driveway and on both sides of the street. Consequently, the street essentially becomes a one-way corridor with little or no visibility for our resident vehicles exiting our complex. Our director of operations contacted Roberto at Parks and Recreation to make him aware of this unsafe condition. On May 4th, Roberto said that the city would get together with the coaches to pass out flyers to parents of the teams to park further away, 40 feet north and south of our driveway. They also have parking on the west side of the ballfields. He also stated to allow two to three weeks for improvements. If that fails, he said, to call the police. On May 24th, a resident noticed that cars parked for the games across the street were parked not only up to our driveway but on the apron on both sides. We took pictures and, as instructed by Parks and Recreation, called the police. An officer came out and had the cars moved. He agreed that they were not legally parked, and his main concern was that a fire truck would not have been able to enter if we had had an emergency. He recommended attending a city council meeting to present this issue. He also wrote an email to Public Works outlining this hazardous situation on our behalf. I have the officer's email and I have pictures of the cars infringing on our driveway. We do have a sign that says, "Do not block the driveway," to no avail, but, so we're hoping the city would be able to do something for us, no parking signs or painted curbs, whatever, and we're just concerned about the liability of anything that will happen as a result of, you know, low or no visibility on that street during that time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Christine. All right, the floor is still open.
I've had to mend some of this. My name is, good evening. I am Jean Henderson of 350 East 6th Street in Casa Grande, Arizona, 85122, and I have found my voice today as of the, at Pert Park Library that recommends to children this summer to find their voice on the summer reading program. I am and have been homeless for almost 26 months, and even though the assistance of Corazon Against Abuse CG Helps, CBT, CAHRA, Horizon, Yuma, Crosswood Mission, and some of the Casa Grande Police Department and Fire Department, they've been really trying to help me. I've said this before, but it's really important. My existence continues to be a type of hell. You don't know if you have to live this way. I live in my vehicle, and I feel, I guess, blessed that I still have my old vehicle. Okay. When, there was going to be a shelter last night. We were told, we couldn't know where it was. I went over to Cara, and Suzanne said that, I told her I still had this group of people bothering me in town, and they might follow me, and she said, "It didn't matter, you'll be protected." So I drove my little, my little truck over there. Okay, I continue to give food to others, to guide them to safe areas, to inform food served by church groups, and yesterday, the first night of a shelter, we couldn't get very many people. Went eating dinner at the shelter last night at St. Anthony's, which was really nice. I met the executive director of Cara and was told she had read my letter at the, in the newspaper about shelters, and she, it just gave her the impetus to come here and say something. I think I was in a, in a safe home for about a week and a half during that time period. Okay, she also said she needed items or work outside CG Helps with the city having done nothing yet. Okay, so she wanted me to tell you. They need some outside outlets so people can plug in. They need two outside cameras hooked up that they have. There need to be new porta-potties, one for women and one for men separately. The picnic tables located in the police department parking lot need to be moved over there, and I'm recommending that the rest of the tables and chairs be removed and enamel ones put there because homeless people are people, too, and they deserve to sit on something nice. The broken windows over there need to be, this is her, too, replaced, and I'm saying by heavy plastic, not plywood. I recommend outside lights there, too, so people don't come in and break things. As per some non-homeless residents, there needs to be 11:00 PM curfew unless a person is going to and from work or with an emergency, as in many major cities. Okay, my other one, I'm gonna try to do this fast. Okay, I'm gonna go fast. All right, last night, what am I supposed to do? Okay. Thank you to St. Anthony's for sheltering two of us women last night. We couldn't find anybody else to come in. There was AC bedding, everything. There was homemade food for dinner. Lisa knows all about that. We had a really nice breakfast. It was quiet, it was clean. Officer Brian Walsh was there, and there was a volunteer female helping us. I don't know what happened, but we're trying to get people, other people to come in. To my dismay, when discussing the need for CG shelters, a woman told me, who's a bird, snowbird, told me firmly, she said, "No." That's the mayor, I don't know if this is true. She said the mayor had stated no city money would be used for shelters, so no shelters. So I assume it's still, the churches are doing this. When I heard that, I said, "I can't say my, every morning I get up and I'm happy," type of thing, because it just upset me a little, it upset me. Okay. There are an inordinate number of empty buildings, including the outlet store off I-10 and so many other areas that could be used for shelters. It would be really simple, I would think, that people, some people in town who are plumbers, electricians, all that, could give up their time to do a few little things to help. The churches should not have to do everything, and I feel like in a way it's a sin against the community and shows disrespect to the homeless, all of whom have a different story. Okay? One, one night a week is not acceptable, but it's really, it is really nice that we did have that, okay? Yuma, Phoenix, Tucson, Flagstaff, and smaller communities have shelters, a shelter or shelters. I'm saying, we, the homeless, pay sales tax by many products around town, and many of us exist inside our vehicles. We pay three types of sales tax, too, when we're buying gasoline. I tried to set up a meeting with Chief McCrory, Deputy Chief Leos, Chief Brian Ramirez, Officer McCloskey, Councilwoman Fitzgibbons, I couldn't get through to you, I've had trouble with my phone and myself about things that are going on, and then I was called by someone who told me about three weeks ago, he was Chief McCrory, and finally, after we talked a while, he asked me, he said, "Jean, what do you want?" And I said, "I need protect and serve for me," and we all do. He said, "Jean, we can't do that. Don't call my officers anymore." I don't know if he was who I was talking to, okay? I wanted to make Casa Grande my home, but now I'm not sure if I can. The higher temperatures are bothering me, sleeping on my truck. There aren't any shelters here. I'm probably gonna go up to Flagstaff for a while and then come back, go back and forth. I have a friend on Navajo, and I'm not sure what I'm gonna do after that because I might go back to San Diego, but I really wanted to live here, okay? I've been trying to do things as much as I can. My prayers are for the homeless of Casa Grande and for everyone else in this town who's positive and wants to move forward, okay? And thank you for listening to me another time. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jean. Anyone else? All right, well, I'm gonna close the public hearing, but, or public comments, but I do want to ask that if anybody was here and had some information that you could share about what you talked about, please leave it with Mr. Rains, and we'll have somebody from the staff follow up. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to Item I, Award of Contracts. I-1 is a Resolution Number 45541. Chief?
Honorable Mayor and Council, I came before you tonight to talk to you about a purchase of two sets of extrication equipment that we use. You've probably heard the term, the Hearst tool or the Jaws of Life. The, the two sets that we have right now that we're replacing are old, they're out of warranty, we're having difficulty getting parts for them. We were, we were recommended to replace them two, almost three years ago, and we've been kind of milking it with parts that we had through our service company, but the time has, has come to go ahead and purchase two new sets. Requesting $97,094.30, and this was part of our CIP budget this year, it was approved earlier this year, part of the 23 fiscal year budget process. And with that, do you have any questions?
Any questions, council? If you need them, you need them.
They're something we use a lot.
Sure.
We, in any accident, if they're going more than 40 or 50 miles an hour, our crews are using them a lot on, on calls and cars.
Yep, that metal doesn't bend very easily, or bend back very easily. Okay, seeing no questions, then I will call for a Resolution Number, please, Gloria.
Resolution Number 5541, a resolution of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting a proposal from Municipal Emergency Services, Inc., for the purchase of extrication rescue equipment, authorizing expenditure of public funds, and authorizing execution of a contract with or purchase order to Municipal Emergency Services, Inc., in accordance with the terms submitted to Sourcewell.
Mayor McFarland, I move to approve Resolution 5541 as presented.
Second. All right, I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Edwards.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Protim Lavender.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. All right, next item is Item J-1. This is Consider Approval of the Appointments to the Casa Grande Youth Commission, and they're recommending a reappointment of Anthony Amato, Gracie Anala, Emma Anala, Sawyer Barth, Kiara De La Cruz, Mila Lopez, Drake Maestis, Reese Maestis, Iris, Iris Moreno, Alexis O'Neil, and Ella Wiles as reappointments, and new members, Avery Waddle, Weddle?
Weddle.
Excuse me, Weddle. Malia, Melania. 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 I could let you say it. Watley, Peyton Salazar, Isabella Castro, Stephanie Perez Zorzano.
Good job, man.
Okay, so those are, those are the appointments. Matt, did you wanna add to that, add a little?
Yeah, I wanted to say we had a great day of interviews a couple of weeks ago, and that all of the kids are voted on by themselves, so it's, it's their process. They, they come in here and they ask, ask questions of, of new and returning applicants and rate them as such, so it's a pretty exciting day. We have our retreat coming up at the end of July for a day-long at Direct Center, and we're gonna be working on budgets this year, too. Danny's gonna help us with that, right, Danny? He, he took time to meet with some of the advisors, I couldn't make it, but I appreciate that, so thank you very much. So we're gonna teach them a little more about the governmental process, the nuts and bolts of it, this year, and it's just exciting. We've got a good mix of, of all different types of kids from different schools and different backgrounds, so it's gonna be a great year. We only had one senior last year, so it's pretty, pretty good, so it's gonna be...
It's a big, big returning class.
Big returning class, and it's gonna be a lot of fun.
And just, yeah, and I was just gonna say, just for a little bit of history, the Casa Grande Youth Commission was established in December 6th of 20, or 2004, and organization's mission is to represent the youth of our city, making it a better place through dedicated leadership and creativity. Commission members are Pinal County residents who are actively enrolled in public or private school, including charter, home schools, grade, in grade eight through 12. So if you know anybody who is interested next year, make sure you let your, even the eighth graders know.
And also, I want to be missed without saying, is Ms. Dawn McBride was there at the founding, so thanks to her, and the kids are involved in the league conference planning now and everything, and I also wanna say to the professional firefighters have been great sponsors this year of the Youth Commission. Just how they were talking about their award they get, and a lot of that comes back to the community, just like through the Youth Commission, so thanks.
Great. All right, then I'll entertain a motion to approve the slate as presented.
Mayor McFarland, I move to approve the appointments to the Casa Grande Youth Commission as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, tell them congratulations. All right, we move the reports up. No, wait, we have a public hearing, sorry. Item L, public hearings, public, consider the approval of Resolution Number 5542 relating to truth in taxation on fiscal year 2324. Mr. Rains, is this yours or no? Nope, back to the, do you wanna introduce it?
Mr. Mayor, Ms. Roberta Sullivan will be making the presentation on the truth in taxation.
Lucky her.
It's also a budget.
Right. Yeah. Go ahead, Roberta.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and Council. We'll be presenting the, the public hearing for the truth in taxation for FY '24. The proposed primary property tax levy for 2324 fiscal year will remain the same as the previous year at .9643 per 100 assessed value. The proposed total primary property tax for the 2324 fiscal year is $4,938,900. The secondary property tax, or secondary tax rate ensuring funds bonded indebtedness payments will be at .4197. Notably, the secondary rate represents an increase of .0204 from the prior year. While the primary property tax rate remains unchanged, the city is required to adhere to truth in taxation steps due to the total amount of spend expected to be raised by the primary property tax excluding the new construction exceeding the previous fiscal year by $327,164. The city fulfilled its requirements by publishing the truth in taxation hearing notice in the Casa Grande Dispatch on May 18th and May 27th, issuing a press release and posting the notice in the calculation on the city's website.
This public hearing is in line for both the tax and our budget, so we only have one public hearing for both the truth in taxation slash property tax and our budget.
Yep. Now I'll go over the budget. The tentative budget of $2,740, or seven, I'm sorry, $2,743,293,37 was adopted on May 15th by Mayor and Council. The budget was published twice in a local paper by required by state statute, and a public hearing on the budget and the tax levy, truth in taxation, was scheduled for the current evening. However, tonight's meeting will not include a vote on the actual tax levy or budget approval, as those decisions are slated for June 19th. Nevertheless, the council will consider a resolution related to the truth in taxation requirements after tonight's hearing. The final budget documents remain unchanged from what was presented and published on May 15th. Following the public hearing on the budget and proposed tax levies, the council will be asked to approve the final budget in a separate meeting on June 19th, along with the first reading of the property tax levy during the regular council meeting of, on the same day.
And I apologize for my, not knowing the budget was part of that, but my, my agenda doesn't have the budget on it. The one you left up here, like. Anyway, okay, so this is a public hearing, so we'll open the, open the meeting to the public comments, again, on the truth in taxation and the budget. Is there anyone here who would like to address the council? All right, seeing no one, then I will close the public hearing, and I didn't give council an opportunity to speak. Do you have any comments, or, I know we've, we've discussed this several times, so, okay. All right, seeing none, then I'll call for an approval.
Resolution Number 5542, a resolution of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, relating to the truth in taxation for fiscal year 202324.
Mayor McFarland, I move to approve Resolution Number 5542 as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Edwards.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Protim Lavender.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, next we'll move to Item N. Move the reports up, and I'm gonna start with you, Lisa.
I, I really don't have much. I know Jean brought up that yesterday, last night was our first overnight shelter at the churches, so everything went well. Of course, you know, we, it's the very first time, so we had just a couple people come. We vetted more people that showed up, but, you know, it just kind of, once the word gets out, we're hoping to get more people, but it was a great run-through. All of the partners were there, the volunteers were fantastic, and, you know, just wanna thank, you know, Laundry Love, the rest stopped for the showers, Laundry Love for the linens, Casa Grande PD, McCrory, Chief McCrory, one of your officers stopped by just to make sure everything was okay over there, so it was really nice of him. Obviously, we didn't have any problems at all, so, so, no, and, and then the churches. So the next, overnight will be next week. It's once a week for now, and the next one will be next week. We don't tell the participants what church it is until the day of, so, so we're hoping, you know, once the word gets out, but it's very normal when we talk to Lutheran Social Services in Tempe, they tell us that it takes a few weeks and months for the word to get out and get more people, but, but Jean, I hope, I hope you had a nice day, and like you said, there was, you know, the, the volunteers at St. Anthony's were wonderful with the food and everything, so it was, it was a great run-through for us, so hopefully we'll get the word out and get some people in a nice, cool place to spend the night, so thanks for coming. So that's it for me, Mayor.
All right, thanks, Lisa. Jeff?
Just real short, I attended a ribbon cutting today for Rodeo Dental, which is a new dentist office. It's opened up by the Fries over there on Florence Street, and it looks like an exciting place to go. They got arcade in there, keep the kids entertained, so, and we're excited to have them and join us.
Excellent. Go get your teeth worked on and play games. Perfect. Matt?
We had a couple things, got to do ribbon cutting for the Passion Church Preschool. They're starting out with the preschool, and then they're doing up to elementary and then junior high eventually, so they're having, and maybe high school at some point, but they had a lot of new renovations. It's always been a school, but they, they redid it all. It's very nice, they're very excited, and I also got to attend, along with some of our other members here, to the LDS stake meeting, and here Apostle Garrett Gong, one of the 12 apostles in the world for the LDS Church, and it was very nice to be invited, they had a great reception and great uplifting messages from various leaders throughout their church, so it was really neat to see that. I find it interesting that Lisa's talking about church, and so much is going on with churches in our town, which is a big part of our community, so I'm glad to hear that, you know, everyone's participating and making this a better place. That brings us to the weeds in town, which I, we talked to Larry the other day, we had a nice meeting with Larry and Stephen, and the city's doing their part, or starting to, or making sure. It's hard to keep up, but not everything that you see is owned by the city, so it's up to private businesses and individuals to also maintain their weeds. And also, citizens can use the See Click Fix app to report any code violations that they might see, including weeds, so that would help, help do that, and Larry has a great idea that we talked about, about actually spending some of our money to clean up some property that's supposed to be managed by the state, but make Casa Grande look better, so I'm excited about that. Also, the Pinal Forty, big organization here in town, put on a great gala a couple weeks ago. They're giving over a million dollars in scholarships to Pinal County kids, so very nice event, and somebody sitting up here won a Beanie Baby collection, so got that going for me. So, you know, the mayor always sells great raffle tickets. So anyway, it was a very nice event, and again, it's just great to be part of this community, even as it's getting hot, we still have a lot of fun, so, and the new, speaking of that, the new employee for the Tourism Board, as we're calling it, the, the DMO, has arrived, and first official day was today.
He's here.
So we're getting going with that over at the chamber, and that's it.
Just a couple quick things. Chamber Luncheon was last Friday, and the mayor did a great job updating the community. It was a really good turnout, so thank you, Mayor, for representing us. Again, congratulations to Joe Leos. I, I know that the Community Service Award is beyond what somebody does in their regular duties as an employee of our city, and I think that I believe Joe was the first firefighter in Casa Grande to ever receive that, and that's a really big honor. Community Services is in full swing. Everybody talks about how there's nothing, you know, to do for kids in Casa Grande, and I can't believe all the...
I can't believe all the activities that are going on. Kudos to the Casa Grande Alliance. I was at their office the other day, and it was packed of kids. They started their summer program, so we have a lot of community involvement with things for the kids to do. Also, I just wanted to point out, I don't know who saw it, social media, the Arizona Department of Transportation did a point about our underpass this past week, weekend. They talked about the history of it, had pictures of the underpass and what we've done to it, so that was a really good tribute to Casa Grande, so that's it.
1930?
I wasn't alive then.
Anthony?
I have nothing to say. Thank you so much.
Well, just, I just, a big shout-out to, we just got notification from the Gila River on, on the city's awards. Huge, this is probably the most money that the Gila River Indian community has ever given to our city, certainly, and that doesn't include local non-charities, we're still waiting to hear on those, but it's, it's a total of about 360, not about, it's $369,378 that they will award the city, some, between the Fire Department, Police Department, the Arts and Humanities, Gloria, Gloria's group's even getting money, so, and then Housing Development Division, so it's a, it was a big win for the city this week. Also, to add on, the Pinal Forty raised $148,000 in that, in that event, and that same week, we gave away another $77,000 in local scholarships to local students. There were 26 recipients, and we awarded those about $2,000 each. One of them was $5,000, and the rest were $2,000, so that amounted to $77,000 for kids for their school next year. Anyway, it's a, it's a busy time of year, working with Paul's group too on some zoning changes. Hopefully, we'll see those coming soon to kinda give us a little more ability, like, actually, I'm not supposed to talk about it because we have to vote on it, so never mind. Because I was starting to get to evil. I'll learn someday, I will, I promise. And, and I know we've been talking about trying to beautification on the city, so keep an eye out for the Florence Gate information, that's still coming out. There'll be another public, not a hearing, but a public information opportunity for Florence Street. We're gonna, we're trying to open that up one more time, and I've begun work, working with, trying to work with ADOT in terms of even Pinal and trying a little more beautification on Pinal, some different types of monuments and the median and stuff. So, we're, we're working on it. It's, we moving at the speed of government, and sometimes that's not real fast, but, but we, we are aware, and we, we want to try and make changes, so anything you, as a community, can do to help us, especially when it comes to weeds and, you know, trash and cleaning up areas that you have access to, we appreciate your help. And again, use that See Click Fix, it does work. I have used it many times, and it's very, very effective. So, again, it's all one word, see, click, fix dot com, and you can find Casa Grande in there. All right, that's all I have. Anybody, last minute, anything else? All right, I'll need a motion to go into executive session.
I'll move.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll adjourn briefly to go into executive session. Thank you, everybody, for coming tonight.